Good evening and welcome to the Village of Woodridge Board Meeting. Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Pittenger.
Present.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham.
Present.
Mayor Murphy.
Present.
Form is established.
Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, led this evening by Trustee Banks.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We're delighted under recognition this evening to have an opportunity to consider a resolution honoring one of our employees on the occasion of being selected as Employee of the Quarter. And for the purposes of doing so, I would recognize Trustee Beavers for a reading of Resolution 37/2011.
Whereas the village has an employee recognition program, and whereas the Employee of the Quarter program is an important part of an overall effort to provide incentives for superior employee performance, and whereas an Employee of the Quarter has been selected by the Employee Advisory Committee on April 26, 2011. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodridge as follows. Bob Myers is hereby publicly commended for being selected by the Employee Advisory Committee for the second quarter of 2011. The Mayor and the Board of Trustees congratulate Bob Myers for this recognition by his employee peers and encourage all village employees to maintain a high level of performance. In recognition of Bob Myers being selected, the village administrators authorized to grant the Employee of the Quarter eight hours of personal time off. Those of four said-mentioned eight hours of personal time must be used in an eight-hour block and must be taken within 12 months from the effective date of this resolution, adopted this ninth day of June 2011.
Okay, we have ordinance 2011-25 and a motion made by Trustee Beavers, second by Trustee Pittenger. Final questions or discussion on the motion, I'm sorry, Resolution 37/2011? Final questions or discussion? Hearing non-clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We're fortunate this evening that Bob Myers is with us, and I would like him to join me at the podium along with Chris Beffel.
As you all may recall, Bob was actually here before you back in February when he had celebrated his 10-year anniversary. At that time, we talked a little bit about Bob's dedication to the village and the enormous workload and quality and quantity of work that he produces over a very diverse set of responsibilities, everything from plan reviews to project design to overseeing project implementation and contractors in the field. His critical thinking and analytical skills have made him really a go-to guy when there's an unusual question or issue. He's been recognized in the past. He has been nominated for the Department Employee of the Year, and was actually the Village Employee of the Year back in 1999. The Employee of the Quarter nomination form actually came from a staff member in the Community Development Department, which I think really recognizes the fact that Bob's efforts and contributions go far beyond just public works. I want to read a couple of the comments from that nomination. Bob is a selfless individual and a great team player. He's been instrumental in the ongoing development of the Geographic Information System project. In March, when that GIS project, My Woodridge, was released to the public, Bob used many personal hours on his own time to get it to its final state. His hard work and dedication helped us meet our goal to create and release a GIS application for the public. I've seen Bob on more than one occasion answer questions about someone's home internet setup to completely reconfiguring a personal laptop. I can personally say he assisted me with some of my own technology issues at home. He's always willing to help and goes the extra mile to solve any problem. His selfless attitude and dedicated work ethic make him a great recipient for the Employee of the Quarter. A little bit about Bob.
Well, Bob, on behalf of the community, we want to express our congratulations and appreciation for your many years of service, but in particular, to be recognized by your peers is the highest form of recognition that one can achieve. So please accept this as a small memento of our appreciation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we're fortunate to have an opportunity to recognize another recipient of the Village of Woodridge Prologis Foundation Scholarship Grants, and I would invite Brian Frank to please join me at the podium. Congratulations. And we have here a check, which if you answer our questions properly, we will give it to you. There's five questions. The first question is to tell us where you graduated from high school and maybe two or three things you're particularly proud of.
I went to Montini Catholic High School down in Lombard. Two things that I'm particularly proud of is, in the past couple of weeks, I had my Eagle Ceremony, which I became an Eagle on December 11th or January 11th. And so that was something that took a lot of dedication and hard work, and I repainted the St. Glasgow School Gym with about 50 volunteers. And then another thing is that I have participated in all eight of the schools' plays and musicals that we've put on since my time as a freshman to my time as a senior, and I've had a few lead roles, so.
Well, that's great. Two more questions before a final one, and that is to share with everyone where you're going to school next year and what your anticipated major is.
I'm going to the School of the University of Illinois in Champaign-Urbana, and my anticipated major is in finance.
Great. Now, we'll give you just a moment to pause here because before we ask you to introduce your guests, we do have a former recipient of the Prologis Grant with us tonight, your sister. And Kirsten, if you could please come forward. And I was going to ask you to tell us a little bit about what you've done since you've been up here, but maybe your father put it in far better words when he said, "Tell them what you've been doing with all the money they gave you," so.
I'm studying elementary education at Western Michigan University, and as of next semester, I will actually be going into the classroom. I don't know what classroom yet. They randomly place you, and I will be teaching literature to hopefully first through third graders, but I don't know what grade. Hopefully second.
And you'll be a junior?
Yes, and I'll be a junior.
Well, congratulations and continue the great work in college. And now you get to introduce your other guests.
The next guest is my mother, Mary Ann Frank. She used to be a trustee, and, like, they don't know yet. And then her husband, my father, Brent Frank.
Well, you did an excellent job in answering those questions, so please accept this and congratulations and best wishes for your continued success.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We then turn to questions from the public.
We have no formal public hearing this evening. We have two other opportunities for residents and guests to approach the podium and ask questions or comments. The first would be on any items that are not related to the agenda. So if there's anyone that would like to speak to the board about an item not related to the agenda, please proceed to the podium. Welcome, and if you could state your name and address to the public.
Sure. My name is Lewis Morton, and I'm a longtime resident of Woodridge. And this is only my second village meeting that I've attended. It's nice to see we've got the full house here today. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to ask some questions. In last week's agenda, there were a couple of resolutions passed, and some of these were for purchases by the village. And what I would like to, or ask to see when you present these minutes, et cetera, or these were for the public viewing, is that they be amended to include a dollar not to exceed. The couple of them were left very open-ended, where the village or village manager would be able to enter into a contract for various services or materials, but there's no dollar in them. And perhaps this is a little too complex, but if you could at least add for a dollar limit not to exceed whatever you estimate is to add, I, as a taxpayer, would appreciate that. Also, there were some rate increases given to us for residents on wastewater disposal and also freshwater. And I'm curious as to what happens to this revenue? Is it going to the general revenue account, or is it set aside specifically for the purpose which was stated as maintaining and upgrading the infrastructure for the water and sewer fund? And if it's not, it just goes into a general fund? I am concerned that this money may be used up for other things and not be there when the village actually needs it for the services.
Thank you. And in regards to the first question, Mr. Gooder, Village Attorney, would like to respond.
Well, I believe in those two instances, and certainly Ms. Rush can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those were for specific contracts. And the specific contract amount was set forth in the document that was attached. Therefore, there was no need to put a "not to exceed."
I have no chance.
That could be, but it was part of the agenda package that was presented, and the resolution itself had a contract attached to it, I believe. And in those instances where there's a specific contract with a specific dollar amount, there's not a need to do a "not to exceed" because there's approval of a specific contract. Only in those, let me finish, please let me finish. Only in those instances where there's not a specific contract amount but a general authority, then you generally do see a "not to exceed."
How does, why does the public not aware of this?
Well, where is the contract on the website with the balance of the agenda, or how is that obtained?
The entire agenda packet, so you have the agenda itself, and the supporting documents are online. They're on the website.
And they're presented how far in advance of the meeting?
We published them on Friday in advance of the Thursday meeting.
And Ms. Rush, if you could also respond.
In terms of the rate increases that were enacted, those dollars, the water and sewer fund, are considered enterprise funds. That's a fund that is set up like a business. So all of the money that is collected in and for the water, as it relates to the water rates and sewer rates, are collected and segregated and separated from the general fund, and those actually directed towards the operations, the infrastructure, and the capital improvements needed, and directed towards the water and sewer improvements.
And again, is the actual accessible via the websites?
The actual information, the actual ordinance?
No, the actual account amounts.
Um, the, yes.
Is that monthly or?
Yeah, well, actually, the audit is posted, so that gives you the annual review of how the revenues and expenses come in and how the rates are reflected and how those dollars are used. And then we also have the budget that's online, and that has very detailed information as to every line item related to the water and sewer, and how, what revenues come in and what expenses are going out. You're welcome.
Thank you for being with us this evening and raising appropriate questions, and certainly feel free to come and join us again or contact the staff directly if you have questions. Thank you. We then turn to questions related to the agenda, and if there's anyone that would like to raise questions or comments regarding agenda items, please proceed to the podium.
And the proposed ordinance, 2011 and 26, the Commonwealth Edison, I personally feel that a 50-year contract is probably a little overreaching in this day and age, especially with the technology advancements going on, and I think that's too long.
Any other comments? Okay. Okay, we then turn to the omnibus vote this evening, and we will have separate consideration of Agenda Item K and Agenda Item C. So separate consideration of C and K, and perhaps, Ms. Rush, when you're reviewing the under-vote items, you might make comment on the 50-year duration of the Commonwealth Edison matter.
Certainly. For your consideration tonight, under the omnibus vote, you have Ordinance 2011-25, which ascertains the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, mechanics, and other workers employed in public works projects for the Village of Woodridge. The State of Illinois Prevailing Wage Act requires contractors and subcontractors to pay laborers, workers, and mechanics employed on public works projects no less than the general prevailing rate of wages, which consists of hourly cash wages plus fringe benefits for work of similar character in the locality, in this case, it's Woodridge, where the work is performed. Each year, the village is required by law to adopt an ordinance establishing these rates. Ordinance Number 2011-26 amends the ordinance authorizing Commonwealth Edison, its successors and assigns, to construct, operate, and maintain an electric light and power system in and through the Village of Woodridge, DuPage County, Illinois. In order for ComEd to access municipal right-of-way to construct, operate, and maintain the infrastructure necessary to provide electricity to Woodridge residents, they are required to hold a franchise agreement. The franchise agreement is outlined in the ordinance. It extends for a term of 50 years, and this is the same term as the previous agreement. A little bit about the Commonwealth Edison franchise agreement. We have been in discussions and negotiations with Commonwealth Edison for many, many months, and Melissa Bozzi did an excellent job in that regard. The ordinance itself is very limited in the amount of ability that we have to impact and modify the provisions in the ordinance and the franchise agreement. And as such, Commonwealth Edison was securing 50-year agreements with almost every municipality in the area that they serve. There is no, I don't believe, any community that has served less than the 50-year franchise agreement. So it's one of those terms that would not be, we would not be able to negotiate for any less. They would not approve of that. And in fact, when we had a workshop on this, we did discuss the other option, which was to adopt their model franchise, and instead, we are actually renewing the franchise agreement that we have in place versus adopting their model franchise. Ordinance 2011-27, amending the village, is the next item, amending the village code of the Village of Woodridge, Title VI, Section 664, Schedule IV, Through Streets. And this item actually is going to be pulled off the consent agenda, and Chris Beffel will review it in detail. Ordinance Number 2011-28, amending the village code of the Village of Woodridge, Title VI, Section 665, Schedule V, Stop Streets and Intersections. This is the village code provides for stop streets and intersections throughout the village, and the proposed ordinance updates the code to have all existing conditions reflected in the code and elevates the intersections of Westview Lane and Everglade Avenue and the intersection of Double Eagle Drive and Seven Bridges Drive to a four-way stop. Item E, Ordinance 2011-29, amends the village code of the Village of Woodridge, Title VII, Section 7-5A-8D.2, Payment of Bills, Delinquencies. Following the transition to our DuCom dispatching service, the police department will no longer be staffed 24 hours a day and will not be able to accept payment after normal business hours for delinquent accounts. This ordinance would provide that future reinstatement of water service for delinquent accounts would need to occur during business hours only. Resolution Number 38/2011 authorizes the Mayor and Village Clerk to execute certain second extension to the agreement between the Village of Woodridge and Johnson Controls Incorporated for HVAC Maintenance and Services, the village contracts for its maintenance service for the village hall, community resource center, and police and public works facilities. This is a one-year contract extension. It is reflecting a 0% increase for existing facilities plus a $1,100 fee for an additional piece of equipment. Item G is Resolution R.39/2011, authorizing the village administrator to enter into a certain advertising transit shelter agreement for the suburban bus division of the RTA and Titan Incorporated. The village board is entering into an agreement with Pace and their contractor to permit Pace to replace the existing bus shelters in the village. The shelters will include some advertisement space that Pace will lease, from which the village will receive a portion of the proceeds. Item H is Resolution R.40/2011, which authorizes the Mayor and Clerk to execute a certain agreement for consultant services between the Village of Woodridge and Valerie S. Kretschmeyer Associates Incorporated. The village staff is proposing to undertake a senior housing study to determine if the need for senior housing in the community warrants, amending the village's James Avenue redevelopment area project plan to include senior housing as an eligible redevelopment activity in the Tipp District. Item I is a motion for fireworks license fee waiver for the, excuse me, the Jubilee. And the next item, it relates to the July 4th fireworks. Again, it is a fireworks license fee waiver. And Item K, which will be considered separately, is a motion liquor license fee waiver for the Woodridge Special Events Committee, Fourth of July picnic. And then there is Item L, the minutes, and M, the accounts, bail registers.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rush. And our request for separate consideration of any of those under this agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Which item?
I would like to ask for special consideration for Item A and Item H.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Agenda Items A through J with the exception of A, H, C, and K, and acceptance of, under this vote, Items C and K, I'm sorry, acceptance of L and M. Entertain such a motion by Trustee Banks, Beavers, second by Trustee Pittenger. Questions or discussion? Hearing non-clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Okay, we then turn to separate consideration of Item A, and the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2011-25. Motion by Trustee Kagan, second by Trustee Banks, to approve Ordinance 2011-25. Questions and comments?
Well, I have a separate consideration for that year. It comes out of the state statute, and so I recognize the statute, but I'm beginning to see if it's an anti-market type of city where someone's calling, "Pick it on the date," we're unable to take that to the vote either, or what someone's doing to work for.
Any other comments or questions on 2011-25? Hearing non-clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We then proceed with consent to under this Item C, and the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2011-27. Motion by Trustee Beavers, second by Trustee Pittenger. Okay, final questions or discussion, but prior to that, Ms. Rush.
Actually, I'm turning it over to Chris.
Thank you. The village had received some questions and concerns from the residents in Seven Bridges related to the Through Street designation that was being proposed. I want to start just with a little bit of a concept of what the Through Street is. It's basically a designation in the code that designates a collector street that is the main route used by a neighborhood or area. The inclusion of the code is simply to note that the side streets are all required to stop and to establish stop signs on those, just to establish the right-of-way. The village has had this designation in the code and had it in place in other areas. We had most recently reviewed and had, in 2009, and had added Westminster, Hillcrest, and a number of other streets in the Farmingdale units, 23, 24, and 25 at that time. The concerns that had been raised by the residents for Green Road was that by adding stop signs on the side streets, you were going to increase cut-through traffic through the neighborhood, and that it would come through at a higher rate of speed than what it currently does now. The secondary concern that had been raised by the residents we had spoken with was that at the intersection of Green Road and Green Trails, that there's a park there, and that that should become a multiway stop as opposed to just a stop for Green Trails on one leg of it. There was also concerns expressed about speeding through the neighborhood. We had, staff had put together a mailer that we sent out to all 300 homes in Seven Bridges just to give them some additional background and information on what we were looking at related to this ordinance and some steps that we would take moving forward. It's something where, when these types of traffic issues are evaluated, there's a staff team that includes both our engineering and operations staff and public works, as well as our police department, who had all agreed that this was an appropriate designation. We also did consult with a professional traffic engineer who had agreed as well with the Through Street designation. We do think that the inclusion of the stop signs on the side streets will improve safety based on the volume of traffic, as well as some of the visibility issues. We have not had any concerns brought back from residents in Farmingdale since 2009, either related to additional cut-through traffic or additional speeding. Related to the issue of the Green Road and Green Trails intersection, we had a similar request in 1997 from residents there, of which we had conducted a traffic study, and it did not meet the warrants for a multiway stop. But we are going to repeat that study with a new consultant to see if conditions have changed and those warrants are met. We had also asked the consultant to identify another intersection in the subdivision that we'll also look at for a multiway stop. We don't believe it'll meet the warrants, but we'll have them take a look at that. We've also asked the consultant, just as it relates to the park, if we can look at and see if there are some other suggestions just to enhance pedestrian safety, which was one of the concerns that had been brought up. In the interim, the chief and the police department are conducting enhanced enforcement out there. We've encouraged residents to contact the police department if there are certain times of the day or certain vehicles they know that are speeding, so they can target those resources out there. And then we've also spoken with one of the board members of Seven Bridges, and are going to be meeting with them in about a week just to talk about the speeding and signage concerns. So it's a brief overview, but if there's some additional questions or information, I'd be happy to try and provide it.
Thank you, Mr. Beffel. Questions or comments from board members regarding the Ordinance 2011-27? Hearing none, Clerk Neestrom, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Okay, we then move to Resolution 40/2011, and the Chair would entertain a motion to approve our 40/2011. Motion by Trustee Kagan, second by Trustee Banks, to approve Resolution 40/2011. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, the, this resolution is for consulting services, and as it relates to
doing a study for senior housing. And I'm pretty sure that this study is not related to the Pine Ridge and the existing investment that we've got for the senior housing project there, is it?
The study will actually be able to be used for a couple of different purposes. We'll be able to use it for assessment of senior housing within the Tiff District. We'll also be able to use this study as part of the senior housing workshop that we want to conduct with the village board later this year. We're targeting the end of July, so that we can get additional feedback from the village board on ultimately the type of senior housing that would be utilized on the Pine Ridge site as well. So it'd be for both purposes.
So tell me more about, so we had, when we originally embarked on the senior housing project, as far as when we started going out, we did a tour, and we went out and we looked at different types of senior housing facilities. So some of us on the board have some familiarity with that type of, is, which, tell me, what's the specific purpose of the consultant, and what information are they going to bring back that we're going to find useful?
Primarily, it's going to be a more specific assessment of the needs of seniors in the community, as well as the market today. When we did the last evaluation, this back in 2008, it was over three years ago, obviously that was before the recession was in full swing. We feel it's appropriate to come back now, after that timeframe, to have a consultant look specifically at the needs of residents today, as well as look at what is the market? What's the interest in the market for senior housing in this area? With that information, then we can bring it to the board, and you can use that to give staff guidance on the types of senior housing developments the village should promote. We can also use this study as part of any RFPs that we would send out in the next six months for senior housing proposals within the village. When we've spoken to senior housing developers, they've said that when you have a market study tied to the request for proposals, the RFPs, they're more likely to respond to that.
Thank you.
And for your review, there is a definitive scope of services, about a four or five-page document at the back of the agenda history sheet that outlines more specifically.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question. And this kind of goes to perhaps, Mike, to what you were just addressing, but when I look at the scope of services, and see Task Two says Senior Housing Inventory and Assessment, Task Three, Market Area Delineation and Demographic Analysis. Now, were all of those things done as part of the Pine Ridge project?
To a certain degree, they were. We consulted with a consultant back in 2007, but because of the period of time, the changing economy, it's appropriate to revisit this before we seek feedback from the village board on specific senior housing needs within the community, as well as within the market area.
So, just so I'm clear then, is it that the different tasks that are laid out in the scope of services are essentially the same as what was done at Pine Ridge, only that you view that data as being old? Or is there, are there different things being done in this scope of services than were done for Pine Ridge? So is it just a matter of Pine Ridge is now outdated, that information that we gathered? Or are there things in here that we didn't do with Pine Ridge?
Yes and yes. You have the same analysis of demographics that occurred with the original study. This is a little more specific, because the consultant knows that we want to utilize this study for specific requests for proposals. So it's going to say, here are the current demands for senior housing today in 2011. And with that information, village board gives us guidance on the type of senior housing to promote within the Tiff District and to promote with the Pine Ridge parcel. In that direction, we will put together a request for proposal. That will go out to senior housing developers. The market study validates the need for that type of senior housing, because this is being conducted by a consultant that the senior housing developers use themselves before they embark on a project.
Do you think it would be, you think it's prudent to wait to see how Pine Ridge goes as far as selling senior housing before embarking and looking at senior housing in other areas?
It's a valid question. There's a couple of things that we're working on. Before we would undertake the request for proposals specifically for Pine Ridge, so much time has passed since the last analysis. This type of assessment needs to be done. And secondly, for the Tiff District and to consider potential senior housing options, this type of information will be very valuable, both to staff and to the village board, to give us, gives us some guidance on the types of senior housing needs that there are in this area.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee.
Looking at the contract, it's, well, first of all, how was this Kretschmer Associates Inc. chosen?
What staff did is we reached out and identified potential consultants who have expertise in this field, and after looking at several, we interviewed two that specifically senior housing developers have used with their own market studies. Because again, going back to not only providing the village information on the different types of senior housing, this market study will be valuable with the RFP process, and if the village utilizes a consultant that works with the senior housing community, it will be helpful in promoting both the Pine Ridge site, as well as any other potential sites. After the interview process, we asked both of the consultants, provide proposals. They did, and this was the lowest-cost option.
One last question I have is, this contract doesn't seem to limit the, our exposure to $15,000. It's $15,000 plus out-of-pocket expenses. It doesn't appear that there's, there is a cap on our exposure here.
If you look at Exhibit A, Trustee Abbott, it says Phase 1 and Phase 2 combined not to exceed $15,000.
Doesn't it all say plus out-of-pocket expenses?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It does.
So that means we...
But, I'm sorry, please.
No, no, go ahead.
There is the upper limit for the phases, and it is plus, and that is, this may not be an answer that satisfies you, but pretty typical as to consultant contracts, whether it's engineering or something like this, a fixed price for the, or not fixed, excuse me, a not-to-exceed limit for the actual meat of the work, plus the out-of-pocket. Where is she located? Where's her company located?
It's up on the North Shore, Evanston.
Well, it's not as if she was traveling from out of state, nor would you have any kind of traveling expenses, really.
Well, I guess my concern with the out-of-pocket isn't so much things like mileage or tolls or postage, but demographic data. It seems to me that that's something that could have been quantified, and...
I'd have to leave that to Michael. I don't understand.
I mean, I guess, I just, I guess I have a concern if they come back and say, we paid $7,200 for demographic data, pay us. You know, and all of a sudden, this $15,000 contract becomes a $22,000-plus contract.
What we could do is tonight, ask for direction on a certain dollar figure for out-of-pocket expenses not to exceed, and then with that, we can go back to the consultant.
Yeah, do you possibly have a suggestion that you, are you somewhat familiar with demographic data, where you could suggest a number to Trustee Abbott and the board?
I would believe no more than $2,500 would be needed for the additional out-of-pocket.
For the out-of-pocket or just the demographic?
Total.
Would that satisfy the board?
As long as there's some cap. I mean, if it, obviously, it should be reasonable. I just...
No, I understand. Would 25 seem to be acceptable? Well, let me inquire as to the maker and second of the motion, whether they would accept that as a friendly amendment to include in their motion, limiting the out-of-pocket expenses to no more than $2,500. And clerk Neestram, who made the motion and seconded?
Joe Kagan. And seconded by Ann Banks.
The maker and second are comfortable with that. Additional questions or comments?
No, not at this point.
Actually, the opportunity to ask questions regarding agenda items would have been earlier. But in this instance, since you're not familiar, we'll give you a brief opportunity to ask a question. Yes, please.
Hi, and again, my name is Louis Wharton, and we're listening to the discussion amongst all these valued people who, in particular, have interest to this, is the fact that if you hire a consultant that's working for the village, and a consultant that also works with your developer, the feeling like that might be a bit of a conflict of interest. Thinking any steps to ensure that we're not a conflict of interest here, that this consultant wouldn't provide data in favor of a particular party that would be developing.
There is a provision within the contract, Section 9, that addresses conflicts of interests. And with respect to utilization consultants that have worked both with senior housing developers, as well as municipalities, this particular consultant is well-respected, with references from several other communities that have provided excellent service and been very objective in their analysis for those municipalities.
And the bottom line is, we have a no-conflict provision. Any additional questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Pittenger.
So, Michael, for, for this, we talked about the data being stale from the previous study, and getting this, getting this data to use for the RFP. In the original description of this, there's no description at all about that being used for that purpose, and the stated purpose on this is specifically regarding the Tiff District. So, so, so when we get these results, at what point, what's the timeframe between the time we expect to have the results of this study and the expected timeframe of issuing the RFP to solicit developers?
Our goal is to complete the study in the next 30 days. Following that, we hope to be able to come to the village board at the July 28th village board meeting to hold a senior housing workshop. Depending on the feedback that the village board provides us on the type of senior housing they would like to see, particularly with Pine Ridge, but elsewhere, including in the Tiff District, we would hope to be able to prepare a request for proposals specifically for the Pine Ridge site in the following two months, and be able to bring back those results to the village board for consideration. With respect to the Tiff District, we will use this information as we move forward to evaluate updating the Tiff plan later this year, which may include possible senior housing options within the Tiff District.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that answer. I think that for, for the purpose of this, I mean, generally speaking, I'm not in favor of using it for the Tiff, but considering the amount of investment we've already got in the Pine Ridge, and since we're well down that road in making that investment, it's probably a useful tool for the RFP. So, but you're saying that there's evidence that there's, there's better success with RFPs that include these types of surveys in them?
Yes.
Is it better success, or is it just that the developers have a better understanding of what it is they're, essentially, they're signing up for by, because, or is it the fact that they don't have to then do the demographic testing themselves? It's already done for them, and it's more of a known quantity?
That would be correct, that a study, a recent study has been conducted, looking at the market analysis. Typically, a senior housing developer, before they would respond to an RFP, is going to want to have a good sense of the market, may even conduct their own market study. By having this attached to it, then they don't have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing non-clerk Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Trustee Kagan.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Motion is approved.
We then turn to Item K, and the chair entertains a motion to approve a liquor license fee waiver for Woodridge Special Events Committee Annual Fourth of July Picnic, July 4th, 2011. Motion by Trustee Gina Cunningham-Pitzeck, seconded by Trustee Pittenger. Questions or discussion? Clerk Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Kagan.
Abstain.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We have no communication or correspondence this evening. Under my report, I'd like to express my appreciation to Mayor Pro Tem Beavers for chairing the most recent meeting in my absence. Second, express appreciation on behalf of the board to Trustee Kagan, who represented the board and the community at an Eagle Scout ceremony last Sunday, and who also joined me at the Eagle Scout ceremony honoring Brian Frank, and also represented the village at the Boy Scouts of America Thunderbird District Community Recognition Dinner in early May. And I would also like to express congratulations to the Woodridge Rotary Club for their outstanding Recycling Community Day recently, their second annual, and board members had received a list of recycling data, what had been collected, and that was an event that was very beneficial to the community, for the community, and for environmental reasons. And a number of individuals here tonight played a major role in that, particularly village administrator Rush, and I think we also had some volunteers there, Trustee Cunningham-Pitzeck, did I see the chief of police there, and Melissa Bozzi, and I may be missing several, Jack, I saw Jack there. Wonderful event, congratulations to the Rotary, and for those of you that volunteered to participate. Likewise, on behalf of the board, congratulations to the chief of police and the department on the successful transfer to Ducomm. Maybe a quick report to the board?
Thank you, Mayor. The transition started Tuesday, this past Tuesday, about 10 o'clock in the morning. By 10:35, we were fully transitioned over seamlessly, may I say. I think the biggest delay was, in that particular moment, we had a problem getting a call. For about 35 minutes, we had not received a call. But soon as we got one, we got a whole bunch. We got about 85 in the next four hours, so that made up plenty for the delay that we had. But we've, it's been very successful. We have one small, little problem sticking with the phone company and microwaves and things that I don't understand, if you believe that, but we feel that that'll be settled by Tuesday. But other than that, the residents will see no disruption. Everything has worked, and everything has worked as planned, so we're very pleased.
Very good. I would also want to note for the record that our village attorney, Mr. Good, who, as you know, was recently appointed to the DuPage Housing Authority, was selected by his fellow members as the chairperson of that organization. So congratulations, and a lot of difficult work ahead of you.
Thank you.
I also extend our congratulations to Melissa Bozzi, was elected as vice president of the Illinois National Association of Telecommunicators, and that may be a short term of office, because we're even more delighted to announce that Melissa will be leaving the village. That's not why we're excited, but for a new position as assistant city manager in Macon, Wisconsin, and it's a wonderful promotional opportunity, and we wish you well in the future. Congratulations. Two other items, the administrator's memorandum. You know, much of what we do goes unnoticed, but every week, the staff, the employees, the department managers put together this the department managers, put together this administrator's memorandum, which is very helpful in keeping the board members aware of what's taking place in the community, what's taking place in each of the departments, and you routinely do that, but it's not routinely received by the board. It's extremely helpful in us getting a better appreciation of everything that you do. So thanks for everything you do to make that publication available every week. Last but not least, I would call to your attention that you may recently have read or in the administrator's memorandum, seen a copy of newspaper articles regarding Downers Grove and their project of going forward with some annexation studies. And you may recall, prior to this current board, the village board taking a look at that, and when we looked at it last, we made the decision not to proceed. And I would suggest we take a very close look at what Downers Grove is doing here, and see how that evolves, because that's something that we may want to review once again. As stated in the article, an annexation study found the village could bring in as much as $1.8 million over the next few years, and potentially $275,000 in additional revenues for Downers Grove in 2011, according to that report. I'm not sure our dollar amounts were that high, but we still, our community, although we've done a significant job of addressing our budget in the last years, we still have a structural deficit. So any efforts on our part, either through annexations that might generate more money or tax-generating businesses, are extremely important. As much of we can be proud of over the last decade, significant, significant retail development and businesses that develop sales tax generation for the community, we don't compare. We don't compare to those other communities. So if there's a priority, it's generating more sales tax dollars, so we can continue to offer the core services in our community. Village administrator's report, Ms. Rush?
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Okay, if it is your pleasure, it is necessary this evening to have a brief executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel, and the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel. Motion by trustee Abbott, seconded by trustee Pittenger. All in favor indicate by the sign "aye." Opposed, motion is approved. We will convene shortly.